Um, how should I say, they're not really offensive to anyone. They help everyone. Because right now, you come in and you have a building, we've had this happen, a building that's on a sloped street, and nobody knows where the heck the base plane is. So these rules of measurement need to be more robust and more detailed, and that was the miscommunication. We didn't get enough in there, but, um...
Measure up.
Yeah, they didn't measure up. Oh, my gosh. Somebody should really just...
Yeah, puns for today.
So, I think the development community would actually be happier with more robust because it manages their expectations, and they, they know where they're going to measure from to get to the heights they want, and, and they're, they're pretty, not liberal, but, I mean, it just gives everybody a, a good starting point.
Clear understanding.
So, we will be making some changes. I'll try to get them done as soon as possible, um, and...
This time around?
Yes.
But none of them will affect what we've already talked about for the dimensional standards?
No, no, no. They're just going to tell you how to apply the dimensional standards. So it's not going to change anything. Like, there's a bunch of references in these Article Two Zone District Dimensional Standards to see the rules of measurement. So there's just going to be more detail on how to do it. It's not going to change how much you can do, it's just how you do it.
Um, all right, moving on. Last part is, we clarified some setbacks, maximum height and story requirements in open space, commercial and industrial zone districts. I'll pause there before I go into planned districts. Any questions? Anything else? Okay, 2.15 Planned Districts. I'll start with Planned Institutional Districts first. Clarified permitted uses and categories and use types, and revised the list of accessory uses. Clarified dimensional and development standard code provisions applicable to PIDs. Clarified existing sign standards by adding date. Remove the provision for the zoning administrator waiver of development standards. And I'll stop there. That's, that's PIDs. PDDs, I can get into next, but I'll pause.
Well, I was just going to say for both of them, a large part of the change with the permitted uses is, we were trying to conform what's listed. So I think it was lifted right out of the old code, and it doesn't conform to the names of the use types we have now. So a bunch of things are mentioned that don't exist, and things that they want. And so we actually expanded it in both cases a little bit.
Yeah, for PDDs, we revised the purpose to clarify applicability across all land use categories and classifications. Revised and expanded uses allowed in PDDs. Clarified status of nonconformities within PDDs, and clarified dimensional standards, and eliminate the Planning Commission on the Spot adjustments, clarifying maximum lot coverage for the district in project plans, and clarifying parking reductions that being available within, and set minimum acreage for PDD. Okay. Anything on that?
So, I think I know the answer to this question, but I just wanted to ask it anyway. Primarily for a PID, I would assume. But is there any relationship between the PID zoning process and decisions about tax liability?
No.
Say it again?
I mean...
Is there any relationship between designation as a PID, depending on what the nature of the institution is, which some institutions would be not liable for taxes because they're non-for-profit?
Right, right.
So, within that context, is there any relationship between what we're doing with PIDs and that tax situation? I mean, one of the things that comes to my mind about this is the Lemoine situation, where they bought all of the new houses. Now, Lemoine's not a, a, it's not a PID right now, but just similar to that, if, or PID, PID, right. If you are a PID, and you do have a situation like that where you're acquiring residential properties that you're going to use for student housing, but it's still not going to be...
But it's going into the PID. So, once you amend it into the PID, I assume it would have the same status as the rest of the land within the PID.
Not necessarily, not in this case.
There are properties that the university has within their PID that pay taxes.
Oh, and so does SU.
Because of the business established...
Right.
...within that property.
Although we did kind of...
Not the ownership of the property.
We did kind of expand the uses that they're allowed to have, but I really don't think that this, this isn't really relevant or affects. We expanded the opportunities. If they have something in it that's, and the tax laws are changing as we, as we sit here. So, everything's in flux. So, we expanded the opportunities and clarified so that there's a clear trail to connect what's allowed to the use table. And I'd read that too, what Kathleen's saying, is that it's not really about our use type, but it's about what they register as...
The business within the property.
That's what I assumed the answer was, but I wanted to ask.
Mayor mentioned this, but 2.17 Rules of Measurement, removed to Article VII, so new location. 2.18 Additional Standards Removed to Article VII. 2.19 Revision to the summary of dimensional standards, making sure it aligns with Section 2.2 through 14, which are the Zone District Dimensional Standards as amended that we just went through. Okay, that's it for Article II. Moving on to Article III and 3.2.
So, I've got an Article II...
Sure.
...question. I need to make sure I can find the right place here.
We rely you, we rely on you to find any mistakes buried.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, it's the in perpetuity issue.
Oh.
Because that language didn't get changed, and I suggested, suggested that sentence can easily be modified.
I thought that was in Article III.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I've got my wrong page.
Are you on the mixed income thing?
Yeah, no, no. Let me look at the right page.
The in perpetuity that I thought you mentioned was in the mixed income development, which is all the way down in Article III.
Right, okay. I got the right page.
Use-specific regulations.
We'll get to it, yeah.
So we'll get to that, yeah.
I thought we were still in two. I mean, I thought it was in two.
Well, we're moving into three, but we're not there yet.
I understood.
We're very close, very.
That's why I couldn't get to that.
Very, very close.
All right. 3.2 Revised Table of Allowed Uses to Add New Use Types for Dwelling, Single-Unit, Commercial Conversion, Dwelling, Two-Unit, Commercial Conversion, Dwelling, Single-Unit, Nonowner Occupied, and Dwelling, Two-Unit, Nonowner Occupied. So let me explain. This is just to clarify our ResCom scheme, which we're no longer using the definition of family or tying it to lease agreements that we never have access to or can ever see in regulating intensity and density of residential dwelling. So, we're separating residential living is owner occupied. If you rent, you're resident, you're ResCom, because the owner, it's a commercial business for them. But there's specific rules if you want to convert rooms in a rented house to a bedroom, where you have to provide additional parking and additional common area to kind of offset that density and intensity increase. So that's how we're treating, you know, multiple unrelated people living in a house. Like, we're not, we're not using those old definitions. That's out. We're using it based on fire code and property maintenance code of the City of Syracuse in New York State, and we're regulating it based on bedroom, permitted bedroom count. And if you want to add bedrooms, you need to account for that increase in density. And the purpose behind that is to preserve our residential districts and make sure we're thinking about things like parking and common area, and some of the problems related to that, specifically in rental citywide. So, there's a lot of words in there, and it can be confusing, but that's a quick summary of what all that is, and breaks it down on the use table, and it breaks it down by use and what each are. But I think I covered it all.
It was there before.
Yeah.
We just, there were like some gaps, and we cleaned it up. As Noah pointed out, there was something that actually didn't exist, so we've now made it exist even though we thought it did.
And owner occupied, Jake, is treated as a Res, ResCom?
No, owner occupied is residential living, and, and...
Unless they're renting out more than three bedrooms, then they become ResCom. And that's been in there from the beginning of it.
For the example that we had about, you have this definite finite amount of space, and you want to add another bedroom, well, if, again, you have to have the driveway, you have to have the parking, you have to have...
We had...
You have to have the common space.
I don't even remember the address, and I don't, I don't need to say it, but we had a project before you where they wanted to add, I believe it was four bedrooms in the basement.
Mm-hmm. Had a couple of them.
And the house had an attached two-car garage or a one-and-a-half-car garage, so there was no way for them to...
That was Mountain Field?
That was over by Lemoine.
Mountain Field.
Yeah. But those are the considerations that we're, we're thinking of the residential neighborhood and the people that live there, no matter if they rent or own, and how that impacts the residential zone district and the use of that land within that zone district.
The process is a lot better clarified now because we've worked really hard on, on redefining all of, so the suggestion came from the team, again from Noah, to separate these out. I had it written before as dwelling, single unit, and two-unit commercial conversions. And for important clarity's sake, we separated them out. And now we've defined them each separately. But I think the overreaching matter that you have to understand is that you can have a residential, non-owner occupied, and make an addition on it, and not end up mired in the use-specific regulations for ResCom. That is, if you get a permit. Because what hap, it's, it's sort of like progressive discipline. You know, you start off and, maybe inverted, though, you start off and you want to make an addition. We don't care, get your permit. But if you're going to make one illegally, at some point in your progressive discipline, you're going to get caught up, and you're going to end up subject to those, and you just really don't want to. And, and it's really the, the best way we could think of that's constitutional to address the, the problem.
Yeah.
And SU's helping by building lots of dorms. They should build a couple more.
Couple more hotels, too.
Next up, revised Table 3.1, Table of Allowed Uses to Add Special Use Permit Requirements for Various Use Types, including bars, brew pubs, restaurants. Eliminate special use permits for liquor stores. This is, a lot of this is based off of preemption with New York State law. And I'll turn it over to Mayor.
We had to treat any place that sells alcohol the same way. So, a restaurant has to be treated the same way as a bar. So, nobody does that, but we, we do because we had someone threaten the lawsuit. And so that's often the impetus for changes. So, basically, the research we found, and in interviewing people at the Board of Liquor, whatever it is, ABC people, and we talked about this, I think, before. Basically, we have to treat restaurants and bars the same way. The old code, and I thought it was crazy, but now I know why, had restaurants and taverns as one use type. But we didn't want to make them as one use type. So, as long as we treat them the same across zoning districts, so if a restaurant requires an SUP in a certain zone district, so does a bar. If a bar does, so does a restaurant, then we're, we're on constitutional ground with respect to the preemption. So, it's, it kind of is a drag, but, you know, a lot of these already required special use permits, so I think we're just kind of throwing in the restaurants, and they won't love it. But actually, as we know from so many cases before you guys, restaurants quite often do need some extra scrutiny, so it's not really a bad thing with music and what have you.
Moving on, we also added new use type nomenclature for neighborhood market, moving on from food and beverage retail, calling it neighborhood market. And that broke out grocery stores as well, included brew pub, smoking establishment, and retail.
The neighborhood markets are, are basically convenience store sign-sized facilities.
We had, we had some people trying to utilize portions of the previous, of the code, trying to utilize other uses because they weren't differentiated enough.
It came in as a grocery store, it's a grocery store didn't need a SUP in certain districts, but retail general did, or vice versa, and so we were getting all tangled up in that. So we just clarified and separated everything out so that, and redefined all of these, which you'll see later in the use definitions.
There's also new use types that were added for manufacturing light, and eliminating manufacturing general, just being more specific with, with that type of use. Also added new use type for warehouses, industrial and warehouse commercial.
All of these manufacturing and warehouse definition changes actually are helpful to the development community because it, it's expanding where these things can be placed and giving clarity and managing expectations about what's going to apply, what type of review process it was, because it was a little confusing before. We had, it was this, that mission project where they actually wanted to have kind of a warehouse attached to the back of it, but you can't have a warehouse in MX3. But what they really wanted was what we created here, which was warehouse commercial. They really wanted to store parts, not necessarily finished goods. So we, we created this to try to help businesses do their business.
In 3.3, we added use-specific regulations for residential, commercial use type. I spoke about that already. It's really just adding specific rules for what you, what you can do and can't do when you have a ResCom property use type, and what use regulations come along with being under that use type. Clarified daycare use type licensing, both for minors or adults. Clarified provisions related to special use permit requirements for activities other than eating and drinking within 300 feet of a residential zone district. I can go down to that. Hold on. What page is that?
Let me...
Is that around amplified sound?
That's down below.
Okay.
No, this was just to clarify that. It said residential district before, zone district, but we've had a lot of instances where, for example, there's multifamily, but they're not in a residential zone district. So, we couldn't regulate to help the people in the multifamily who are get, having noise complaints or issues because it said zone district. So we changed it to say any land use type. So it doesn't have to be a residential district, R1 through R5, because someone in MX who's next to a bar had nowhere to go. They, they were just stuck because they weren't a residential district. So we just said the, the land use types that basically have people living in them. That was a clarification.
Yeah. Related to that, also clarified the requirement for amplified music or sound. Pretty much anybody that has amplified sound now, if you're within that proximity, it gets triggered, whether it's speaker system. I mean, think about a bar that just play, just has sports on with multiple TVs and speakers, like on amplified speakers. It's loud. So again, we've had examples that are adjacent to residential uses and residential zone districts, and we feel like those should be under special consideration based on the use and what they're doing inside. It's still something that's allowed. It just has to go, you know, meet certain criteria and go through certain processes. So it's not disallowing development or establishment of businesses. It's just giving us tools and making sure that they're being held accountable.
The question I had about this one was, would there be advantage to having a decibel level in there? Because, and you could, they could argue about amplified, the term amplified.
No. The noise ordinance has it, and the problem with decibel levels is, I've litigated these, when it gets to court, if you haven't done a sound study, you're going to get tossed out. I mean, you can stand out there with a meter, but unless you know how to use it right, and you've done it over a period of time, and, and also, for local enforcement, the police, they have to hear the sound when they're standing there, and they don't carry decibel meters around.
Okay.
So, some jurisdictions regulate it, and it might be that way in our code of ordinances, if you can hear the music or the noise over the property line at a certain level. But this is, so we didn't do decibel levels just because it's, it's really not, it ends up not being helpful in the end to the people who care, yeah.
And unreliable, too.
Yeah.
Again, the, the change really triggers the, the requirements for when you need a special use permit and when you don't. So, it, it puts...
The burden on you.
Yeah, development through a process where they're being held to, to meet criteria and conditions within a special use permit. So if we do have police calls, or noise calls, or noise violation tickets, like, that can be part of the renewal process and/or revocation process. So that's how it kind of connects the dots. And we added a procedure for home occupations. There was never one before for that, right?
There was no procedure before.
That was lacking. So that'll be through minor site plan review, and that change codifies that. Moving into, stop me at any time, too. I'm, I'm going to just jump to 3.4 and 3.6. 3.4 clarified that accessory uses must be incidental to the primary use. Clarified general requirements applicable to attached versus detached accessory dwelling units. Clarified that accessory structures less than 80 square feet must be three feet from the property or more. If they're greater than, they have to adhere to all setback requirements within that zone district that they're in, that it's in. Clarified that all accessory structures in non-residential zone districts shall not exceed 2,000 square feet combined or 10% of the floor area of the principal buildings. So, we want to make sure that accessory structures just aren't massive.
We, we had a case that came, and Amber can speak to it more because she analyzed it, but that came before the Landmark Preservation Board, and these people designed this gorgeous, gorgeous, gorgeous ADU in the Berkeley Historic District, but it was like over 20 feet tall. And the neighbors weren't really keen on it. And they, they, in the end, took it down a little bit, but that's also why we put those, changed all those height regulations to clarify, because the definition of height, before we had shored up the rules of measurement, said to the peak. So, it should have been like kind of to the plate at that height, because to the peak adds a bunch more feet to the height of the building. And so, it was, it was pretty controversial, and, so it was a great learning opportunity because we were able to make a bunch of changes to clarify everything. And there they are.
In addition to that, we also, for accessory structures, put in that they shall not exceed 1,000 square feet combined in residential zone districts. A lot of that was based off of most, we came up with an average, right? We felt most houses were around 1,200 to 1,300 or something.
Oh, yeah, because they can't be more than 50% of the gross square footage of the primary, so.
And clarified that ADUs shall not exceed 800 square feet or 50% of the heated floor areas of the principal structure. Clarified that only one ADU is permitted per single-unit dwelling, whether that's attached or detached, and revised the review procedures for home occupations and use regulations to, again, that was kind of pointed out, up above, using minor site plan review. Jumping to 3.6, add, added new...
Before we go to 3.6?
Yeah, yep.
Two questions. One, just the last issue on, on ADUs, square footage. 50% of heated floor areas. I mean, I can understand what that means. I just, a little bit confusing because sometimes heating is in the floors, heating is in other places, but you're not referring to that.
No.
So I just wonder if that's misleading.
No, if, if you've got a, you've got radiant heat in your garage, then you can count it. I mean, you can prove it, and you can count it. I mean, you know, we're, we're not going to go, I mean, we...
Right.
It's the gross heated floor area, so if someone's got radiant heat, they've got radiant heat. That's, we didn't think of that, but we haven't encountered it yet, that someone had a radiantly heated garage, because most people don't, I mean, it doesn't matter what kind of heating it is. Like, if your house is heated radiant, or radiators, or forced air, we don't care.
Right, I understand.
But, to your point, though, I'm just thinking for the first time, because this is what always happens. If someone had a garage, an attached garage that had radiant heating in the floor, they could count that, but it's not going to add...
Would that allow me to exceed the 800 square feet?
No. No, the 800 is the max, no matter what.
Yeah, it's 800 or...
Okay, so you got to get those words.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And I think...
Okay, what page is that, Kathy?
We can look at the actual code, but I think...
I only have cheat sheet.
Uh, because I lost.
I guess my question is just about the use of the term floor here, because we're talking about a heated area. Basically, you're talking about rooms, but we're defining that by floor. So I just wonder if that's confusing, because the term floor is in there.
Right. Yeah, I think of it as just like conditioned space.
Yeah.
You know, that's what you're...
I mean, that's just the question. Somebody reading it would be...
That's what you're calculating.
What you want to say is, I can't build anything that exceeds 800 square feet.
We do say that.
That's one of the requirements, but it's that, but you, if you're...
What I heat inside my house is irrelevant.
But you also can't exceed 50%. So if I'm a 1,200 square foot house, I can only have a 600-foot ADU. I have to have, to go to the max of 800, I have to have a 1,600 square foot principal structure. Does that make sense?
No, it's in here. So, in the...
Do the words make sense that way?
General regulations for all accessory uses and structures, the total floor area of accessory structures to residential use shall not exceed 50% of the heated floor area of the principal structure on the lot, except as otherwise provided herein. And then later, we, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, we go to accessory dwelling units specifically, and we say, because we went over this, the gross floor area of any accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 800 square feet, even when combined with a non-residential structure like a garage. So, that's where we handle that.
Okay.
Great. So I guess my question is actually simpler than that.
And we say it again, no accessory dwelling unit shall exceed, it's in the general requirements, but for ADUs, because they're kind of their own little thing, we repeat it, no accessory dwelling unit shall exceed 50% of the heated floor area of the principal structure. So...
So if my structure is 4,000 square feet?
You can have 800. That's what this, and it does say, it says, you can go...
What it says?
This was, so again, a lot of our...
Shall not exceed 800. Shall not exceed 800.
Okay.
Yeah. But a lot of the houses are...
But I'm looking at what you're saying.
A lot of the houses in the city are smaller than 1,600 square feet, meaning they don't qualify for the max. They're stuck at 50%.
Their number is...
Okay. I just wanted to be sure I got that.
I'm clarifying that, too, maximum.
I guess my question is actually a little bit simpler. Is, do we need the area, the term floor? Isn't, we're talking about heated areas. Why does it have to be a heated floor area?
Because that's the standard in the code of how we measure the size of a structure is the gross floor area, and we're trying to key it to the house. So...
Right. You don't count un, like attic space in your square footage.
Most garages aren't...
Understood. So, but, so you don't want to say heated room, rooms, though?
No, we want to...
Okay. Just curious. So, so before going to 3.6, I have another question about the in perpetuity issue, which is 3.3A3. And, at least my, for my concern, I think there's a simple fix. I mean, it currently reads right now, affordable dwelling units must comply with the city income restrictions in perpetuity unless the residential use of development is reduced to 19 or less residential uses, units, or mixed income development regulations are abandoned by the city. Seems to me that we just add the phrase abandoned or otherwise modified by the city, because if the city can abandon them, they certainly can modify them. I, I just flinch every time I see the term in perpetuity by itself.
Sue wanted that.
What's that?
That's what the Corporation Council wanted back when this was adopted, and we were instructed not to make changes to this section again in this round, Barry. We can take it up with Sue, but we're trying to work with, what's the department? We can take it up with Sue, but we're trying to work with, what's the department?
MBD.
MBD.
Right.
Thank you. About some more global changes to this. So the only thing we added as a basis of a bunch of conversations was the 70% line that, because there's been this issue about concentrating poverty, so we had a meeting with Sue and some MBD people about trying not to concentrate poverty, which is against the housing plan, right? So, you can't have more than 70% of your units being affordable because we've had a bunch of proposals for 100% affordable. And so they get the benefits of this, but it's, they're invariably located in places that have low...
Of course.
Low income, average incomes to start with. So, we were basically, again, caution not to make any changes to this section other than what you see. But if you feel, and that was language that the Corporation Council wanted at the initial adoption of this or the first round of amendments, but if you, if you feel really strongly about it, I can take it up with her for you. Or you can reach out to her, you know.
Well, if you want me to, I will. I don't see where that degrades us in any way. It just makes it clear because, I mean, if the city can abandon the regulations, then they certainly can modify them.
Let me get to that. I'm still writing notes about the ADUs, so if I can get to that section and review it again because I haven't really looked at it. Are we, were we there yet?
Well, we passed that because this is 3.3A3.
Yeah.
3A, right?
Yeah, but we, no, we didn't do, that's a use regulation, so...
What page are you looking at, Barry?
Uh, the page in, well, it depends on which edition.
All right.
I've got page 65 in the edition that we originally got.
Okay, hang on. Oh, yeah, because that's definitions, okay, hang on. That's about page...
Page 65 in the original.
Yeah.
Text that you sent with the markup changes.
Yeah, it's page 65, yeah, same thing. So, what paragraph is the in perpetuity language in, Barry?
Affordable dwelling units must comply with city income. It's the top of the page, 165.
Uh...
It's one, two, three, four, five, six lines down.
I'm, I'm, I'm 65, but I'm not...
Should be three. There.
I'm just... Here we go. Okay, affordable dwelling units must comply with city income restrictions in perpetuity unless the residential use of development is reduced to 19 or less residential or the mixed income regulations are abandoned by the city. That is definitely something that was wordsmithed by Corp Counsel. I, I don't want to try to sit in your place to, I'm happy to take it to her, but I would suggest maybe you reach out to her and tell her what your thoughts are on it. Because I know we changed that. It used to say just in perpetuity and then that everything after that was added to address somebody's issue with the word in perpetuity. Thought maybe it was yours.
Well, no, because...
So, in the first round of amendments.
At the last workshop, I made the same suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I just mean that the, yeah, so I don't know, that, that might have been what was proffered to satisfy that suggestion.
No, this was, the language was the same at the last workshop.
Okay, okay.
It's just that one phrase or otherwise modified.
Okay, so, do you want me to reach out to her? Do you want to do that?
Yeah, that's fine if you want to have that conversation.
Either way, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do it.
I mean, I'll do it if you want, but you talk to her more frequently than I do, so...
Talk to...
I mean, I don't think that it degrades what Corporate Counsel wants to achieve there, but if it does, then fine.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of conversations that I'm not privy to either because there's just so much going on with this. I can tell you one thing is that we're trying to, I had suggested this before and we just really don't have the manpower necessarily in any department, but what we need separately is an affordable housing ordinance that sits along with this mixed income. This mixed income isn't meant to be the affordable housing. This is merely a use-specific regulation to basically offer density bonuses to people who want to build some affordable units. So, that doesn't really have anything to do with your issue with it, Barry, but I'm just saying that there's a lot going on. I mean, Michelle Samansky, there's like a whole kind of department working on this and, to be honest, I'm not privy to most of that. Christian was the lead on all of that and I haven't really been involved with it, but I will definitely take it up with, I'll send an email out to everybody, Michelle, Mike, Jake, Sue, everyone, and see what they're thinking about that right now. And, and like I said, except for the little bit, the clarifications that you see in the 70%, we were directed not to make changes, but I'm sure that, I'll bring it up. And I'll email you, Barry.
Okay.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I think we were like at 100...
3.6 is where I stopped you.
Yeah. Thank you, Barry.
Yep, continuing with 3.6. New definitions for, a lot of the uses listed there, some of them new. Grocery stores, restaurants, retail sale use types for, and bars, brew pubs, neighborhood markets, supermarkets, drugstore, pharmacy, smoking, manufacturing, et cetera. Added new use definitions for commercial warehouse and for personal storage facilities. Clarified the definition of industrial warehouse use type. Add and revise definitions for rescom, again, and we went through that. We had to create a new category just to clarify it. And Mayor spoke to that already regarding the use table as well. So that's it for 3. Article 4, 4.2 removes provision allowing reviewing boards to modify the development standards during site plan review process. 4.4 conforms Table 4.1 to the new residential use types. We revised the parking reductions to clarify language. Separated commercial and residential parking standards and rules. Added a new section for residential living for parking and driveway standards to coordinate with public works. An expansion and enlargement of regulations throughout. You have something?
No, I'm trying to find the storage facility definition. I mentioned it.
Storage facility?
Did you mention that?
I did not.
Oh, okay, good, because I thought I was losing my mind. We, we have a number of use determinations, I mean administrative use determinations, and ultimately, the goal is usually to integrate those into the code, but we haven't done that yet. So they stand as their own little things that modify the code, but they have their own standards or cross-reference to the standards. And I thought he had mentioned one of them and I was like, I don't remember putting that in, so I was trying to find it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Article 5, we added reference to filing an Article 78 in Table 5.1. It really just clarifies what your procedural process is if you appeal and what, what comes next. I don't know, Mayor, anything you want to add to that regarding...
I'm like an article behind you, Seth.
Okay.
I'm scratching away, but...
While she's catching up, I have a question about 5.1.
5.1?
The table.
Oh, yeah.
Since you just mentioned that. The, why isn't resub included in this table, just in terms of who makes, because I've gone through everything, every time, every place where resub appears, there's nothing in there that actually says who makes final decisions on resub.
Oh, because it's...
It's clearly implied that Planning Commission is in charge of it.
It's governed by the resubdivision ordinance, not this.
So the subdivision...
Right, but there's nothing in the code.
It's not in this code because a resubdivision ordinance is a separate standalone ordinance. You're granted authority to do resubs in the charter. That's why they come to you. There may be reference to it in here, but resubs are not regulated by the zoning code, so it wouldn't be in that table.
Okay, so...
I think it makes sense, what you're saying, because you do do them, but...
So, in the future...
We need to do, we need to redo that.
We, we've talked about integrating new subdivision regulations either alongside or into a zoning code overall that integrates that into it, but we're just not there. The subdivision regulations are from the 70s, 60s.
Okay, so I understand that. So the thing is, I guess the language in the line there, it says resubdivision, it says see ordinance. Okay, so I keep looking through the ordinance and it's not in the ordinance.
I, I saw that and I was gonna clarify and put subdivision ordinance, but I was like, ah, that's obvious.
Well, but it should be something other than, that doesn't direct the reader to look at the ordinance and so you look at the damn ordinance and there's nothing in there.
See Syracuse subdivision ordinance because it's called the subdivision rules and regulations or something. It's, it, by the way, I hate to do this to you, Barry, but it actually doesn't mention resubs either, does it? As I recall, it doesn't actually mention them. It's really about, the subdivision ordinance is really about platting, like initial plats. It's really old, like when Syracuse was growing. And so it's all about how to lay out a subdivision, but we don't do that ever anymore. It's woefully sadly out of date and I do not believe it mentions resubs, does it? Yeah.
So, I may be the only person in the universe that has this problem, but I spend hours trying to figure out what that means. And so, I mean, if we can put something in here that keeps people from trying to figure out what that means...
I'm gonna make a proper reference, but definitely it's not governed by this code. And it's actually not governed by the code we're referring you to, but at least you could get the flavor.
Get your resource to go.
Yes.
Well, at least I should stop looking for an answer.
Sorry, yeah.
You know, the reason we have the annual review, we can do lots of little footnotes on every page because we have all these outside references we could go to. But, but I think, I agree with Barry that in this page, it would be helpful to say, okay, you know, this is really...
Don't look here for answers.
Right, right, because there are a couple of places where we can start saying, like with the alcohol exemption, that's an ABC thing, you know, with drugstore and pharmacy, that's a, another outside state statute.
Yeah, another preemptive thing, yeah.
Right, but it's just, it's, I get it, if there's one or two places where we say, just so we internally know...
I also added this last column of the final line of appeal because we have been getting challenged right and left, both internally and externally, about when Article 78s can be filed. And Article 78 is specifically allowed based on your decisions and based on BZA decisions that's set forth in the general municipal law, but also generally, anyone aggrieved by a decision of the zoning administrator code enforcement officer can file an Article 78. So, I just put this in here because I'm tired of people saying, well, you can't do it or you can't do it, or why did you say it for this? And I just put it in, so...
It's 30 days.
It's superfluous.
It's 30 days in general municipal law is, is required, because that seems a little bit short.
It's 15 days in some instances, but it's, it's 30, no, it's 90 days, isn't it, Walter? It's 90, but it's 30 for a zoning.
Because, the thing is, you just have to tell people what's considered a final decision. And so if there's some things where zoning administrators say final decision, then they need, their time is running.
That starts the clock.
Yeah, that's the important thing is they have to know when the time starts running.
And that I need to add, that is really important because we have a case right now where a staff member sent an email. And normally that would not, and it's not structured in here right now as we inherited this document, that it has to be a final decision. What the general municipal law says, tell me if I'm wrong, it says, any decision of the zoning administrator code enforcement officer, in some jurisdictions, that means a final decision. Since Ji Tong, who wrote this particular email, and it was correct, wrote the email, he's Jake's designee, but I've been struggling with whether it rises to the level of a final decision, really struggling. And I had thought about that earlier, that I should define somewhere in here what a final decision is, but I'm gonna have to look at the case law to see what New York State case law says about it in this context because it should be in here. But I think it's also, like, it's a final decision of the board if you voted on it or a final decision of the BZA. That's obvious, the general municipal law actually carves out a section under both of those boards and says, you don't like what happened, you can file an Article 78, you have 30 days. But in the BZA one, it also, it says, anyone aggrieved by a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals can file, or anyone aggrieved by any decision of the, and what I've seen is people file Article 78s for all kinds of decisions, but there's also nothing in the general municipal law about exhausting administrative remedies either. So I'm a little confused combining lots of different experiences that sometimes we require you to go to BZA for an appeal. So, if someone were coming to me, I'd say, well, yeah, you have to because you have to exhaust your administrative remedies. But for all these categories where we don't require you to go to the BZA for appeal, my assumption is they jump straight to an Article 78. But those aren't always final decisions, like an email from staff who says, you can't do XYZ. It wasn't Jake, it was a designee, is that a final decision? So, I think all of it needs clarification in here, in this round, and I might be calling you.
But it is a final decision because I can't get the permit because he sent me the email. So, whether it says final or not...
Well, this isn't even that, this is...
It doesn't allow me to go to my next development step.
It doesn't let you go to the next step, so that's why I'm viewing it as a legit, so the person filed an appeal with the Board of Zoning Appeals, but here's the rub, and I added some language that we're gonna get to, and I may as well explain it now. So here's the rub. Noah, this team is so creative, they're like amazing, he's like, but, so I was trying to come up with an example of this. Let's say somebody wants to apply for a variance and there's a couple circumstances where you can't. You want to put a rocket launching station in here in Syracuse. It's not in our use table.
Fine, yeah.
Wouldn't it? It's not in our use table and we have an exclusive use table, so you cannot apply for a variance for a rocket launching facility because we don't, we don't allow them. So, if someone writes to us and says, I want to apply for a variance for a rocket launching station, which is tantamount to what happened, Ji Tong said, no. Is that appealable? Because I don't think it is.
The use is.
The use isn't because it doesn't exist.
No, but I can appeal the basis of the use table.
To an Article 78, but you can't appeal it to the BZA.
No, I can do an Article 78 on the use table.
Right, 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 that's what I'm saying. But there's all these layers to, I love administrative law, it's like my favorite thing. So, so that, that's literally something that's going on right now is, is someone's challenging a memo that said, you can't do something that's not allowed, that you're not allowed to do, and they're like, oh, well, I'm gonna file an appeal to the BZA, and I'm like...
Okay.
Logic is a little...
But they can't hear the appeal because it's not an allowed use.
Well, the thing is that we're not...
It's a variant.
See, we'll get to the language, but I'm gonna lay it out for you right now. I put language in here, just last night, actually, because of this, that, that staff will not process a frivolous appeal because I've got to see if there's case law on it. Frivolous is that situation where you're simply not allowed to do it. People ask us for stuff, you'd be surprised at what they ask for.
Well, with the apples to apples, we've had helipads in two different hospitals.
Right.
So that's a permitted use.
Yes.
But we're not gonna say you can do that at an elementary school.
But I'm gonna let you file your variance application to try to get one because it is a permitted use. It is a use that's in the table. So, are you gonna get it? No, you're not gonna get it, but I'm not gonna bar you from getting before the BZA because it's something that we actually allow. But the, the rocket launching thing, I'm not gonna let you get to BZA, but to me, that's a frivolous one. They have to have a pre-op, they come to us and we say, you can't have a rocket launching facility in the city like we don't have them. Maybe the next round of amendments, or maybe we can do a use determination, a zoning administrator use determination, but right now, we don't have one, so therefore you can't go to BZA. To me, I have to, again, check the case law to see if that's how they would categorize it, the courts, as a frivolous appeal. And I put, this is an amendment coming up here that you're gonna see, that we won't process or accept a frivolous appeal. But your helipad is, no, it's coming up in the substantive language. So, this all is to say that...
Frivolous is just not supportable in the venue that they're following.
It's not, it's something that's not allowed, right? Like, in court, you file something that's just stupid and you know it's stupid and you do it anyway and sometimes you get sanctioned for it. So this is the same thing, we're not gonna sanction... So this is the same thing, we're not gonna sanction you, but we're not gonna have staff write a staff report, book the BZA, or book this board if it was someone trying to get a special use permit for something that simply we don't have them for. Like, it'd be like, it's the same as someone applying for a special use permit for something that.
We don't allow.
We don't allow. Would we process it and hand it to you? Absolutely not. I mean, so, but, but it has, this has to be clarified in Table 5.1, what administrative decisions are, when they're final, and that's a really good point, sorry for the long discussion, but we covered some of what's coming, so, or, no variances? Yeah, they're coming, so. Go ahead, Jake.
Moving on to 5.5, which is the substantial rewrite of special use permits.
Before we go to 5.5, just observation question, I really don't know what we can do with this at all, but the term review, reviewed, process, process, is used ambiguously throughout the document, and here specifically where it comes up is 5.4A/B on page 192.
You're always a way ahead of me, Barry, 5.
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to get in before Jake goes to the next section, so.
5.4A.
5.4A/B, it's on page 192.
So are you at site of 192? 5.4A/B.
The sentence is, no application shall be reviewed without a complete application.
Oh, yeah.
How can you tell if the application is complete if you're not reviewing it? The way the term review and process occurs throughout the document, there's instances in what we're referring to, it can't be reviewed, or it can't be processed, but how can you tell that it can't be?
Where is that? Because I need to clarify it for sure.
Okay, this is 5.4A/B on page 192.
Page A, got it?
Is it the same 192 as what's on the screen, or we got different numbering?
Well, I don't know, because the page is changing, just because this stuff is different.
Is it a big A, Barry? What kind of A is it? 5.4A, site plan review, is that the header?
Yes, site plan review.
5.4A.
Site plan review.
And then the next numerical, or what's the next alphanumeric? So there's A1, purpose, 2, applicability.
I've got, it's 3, minor site plan review, procedure, A, pre-application conference, B, application submittal.
Ah, there we go, there we go, there we go.
Application submittal and processing.
Okay, yeah, that's my fault, that's my, no application shall. So what that should say is, review of the application shall not commence until there is a completed application or something less verbose than that. That's what we mean, is that, what happens a lot, just so you know, but you probably do know, is that people apply and they leave half their information out. We're not gonna complete a review until you have all the stuff turned, especially with site plan reviews, there's a whole laundry list of stuff you have to turn in, and we're not gonna do a partial review, so you're correct, that's not worded well, thank you.
What do you call what you're doing before you do what you wanna say is a application review? What do you call that?
What do you call it?
Who will say, who will review the application?
For its completeness, okay, so that makes sense.
Right.
So that happens with the term review and the term process throughout the code. That's a simple way of.
Right now, like, if we think the application is complete, who will send out a letter of completeness? Hold the application, and then we can start the process, review the compliance if it's compliant with the code.
Should that step be integrated in here too, so the letter of completeness won't be issued until?
It is, it's in here somewhere, but I have to find it. So Barry, you know, you just said that there's lots of places where there's review and application and process. If you wanted to be more micro and kinda beat me up with that, I would be literally forever grateful to you, because it's really hard to find everything.
Well, I understand, that's why I'm pointing it out this way, because I don't know you wanna deal with that this time around, we got two weeks before we have to vote.
That's not, to me, it's not real substantive, and if I could find the places, I would do it, it's just that the ordinance is now three hundred pages long and it's getting harder.
I understand, I mean, what I would have to do is, I have to do a term search on review and process and look at every place throughout the document.
Okay, I'll do that, I'm gonna do that, I'll do a term source review.
But that's gonna take hours.
And that, no, it won't.
For me, it will.
No, that's really good, I'll use those, Ji Tong and I'll do that together, term search and correct references, okay. To actual activities. All right, I'll never know what these notes mean, per Barry, maybe that'll, okay.
Per Barry's OCD.
No, it's much appreciated. This is my favorite thing to do, but it's really hard. Okay, next.
Almost through it, this last part will be the bulk of the remaining discussion, I think. Special use permits.
No biggie.
We eliminated them running with the land.
Can we applaud?
I never understood that.
Yeah.
It's what we inherited, like, the state law says that they do run with the land unless you specifically say in the code that they didn't.
Heard a good rationale for why they would.
I've never, I've litigated tons of them, and I've never, I told the staff when I first got here that they, do you remember this? Christian and I got in a big fight, that they ran with, that they didn't run with the land, because I've litigated them a lot, like, five cases all over upstate New York.
Peculiar to New York, maybe?
No, no, all over upstate New York and in other states, so I'm like, they run with, they don't run with the land, and Christian looks at the table and he's like, they say, it says they run with the land, I said, they don't, I've litigated them, like, they don't, but it's.
If you go back to the state carryover, when I first started at the state, it was hospitals, orphanages, condos, churches, places that were community, you know, those kinds of.
That you need.
And so when they changed hands, you wanted to stay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The orphanage, or the school, or the church, or the whatever. And so that started the practice.
But they can have impact.
It was the land, not the own, the business owner, or the business entity.
Because those are community facilities that you need, or entities that you need.
Exactly, and they were very vital to.
They could have an impact, but they're vital, so that's kind of the origin of the SUP, so, okay, well, now that makes sense.
Now it's, of course, grown into a much bigger thing.
Okay.
And these institutions are what they used to be.
The institutions have changed too, you're right, you're right.
Nuns making videos.
So we sidetracked you a little bit.
I'm on it. So added some new language to the common council's decision and how they're going to come to that and what they can consider, and it just revises the procedure overall. Any questions on the special use permit?
We specified that one of the factors the common council considers is your recommendation, because there's this string of cases that divided up, I explained this to you before, that says, if the council reserves the decision for themselves, if the planning commission makes the decision, so I wanted to clarify that your recommendation isn't final, and that it's, because the way I've been advised, that we've had some trouble with this, council believes that they're adopting your recommendation, but in fact, they are acting on the application. So I wanted to clarify in here that your recommendation is not what they're adopting, but in fact, they're approving, not adopting, but approving the actual SUP application.
That what we've been saying.
Taking into consideration our recommendation.
Sending your recommendation to them for their action.
No, you say it, but they believe they're acting on your recommendation. But, so we clarified that.
So a question about that, this actually came up when I was discussing this with the mayor. When we make a recommendation, we approve the application as presented, and we make a recommendation to the common council. We have conditions. Are those conditions operative when we vote, or can they only become operative when the common council approves?
They're only operative when the common council approves it, because until that time, they don't have an SUP.
Or a condition.
Right, because I was wondering about that within the context of the Gettys Street, when violations occurred after we approved it, before the common council did, so I was saying, well, they didn't have to reject it, because it's already, Jake can already close them down. But no, he can't. Jake?
I have a question.
Yep.
Is there, so we've set the timetable at sixty-two days.
That's statutory.
Right? I got that, which is statutory by state law.
The public hearing, so you have a public hearing, they're technically supposed to have a public hearing, the final decision maker, so the general municipal law says that a public hearing shall be held sixty-two days after receipt of the application.
Right, right. So typically, that's triggered at the CPC law, right? Because we do the intake, they don't do the intake.
But they're supposed to.
Okay, well.
By law.
I get it. So what I'm driving at is, if I'm trying to open a business that requires a special use permit, and I have a sixty-two day clock here, and I have a minimum sixty-two day clock there, now I'm five months from opening.
I had it thirty.
Which, if that's what we're doing, I think we just have to be very clear with applicants when they walk into the desk, like, this is six months before you get to open that beauty salon, like, don't go do it tomorrow.
I switched it to thirty days, but when we reviewed it today, this afternoon, the whole team went over the ordinance, the amendments again, I realized that council's supposed to hold a public hearing, and so I could lessen yours to less than sixty-two days, but there's this little rub about, is council really gonna have public hearings, or is your public hearing the one that counts?
That they accept, right.
Right, and there's no case law that says that, that your hearing can be the hearing, so I just put the statutory requirement in for them, because technically, that's the hearing.
Right, I get that. But do we wanna add then, in the world of, I'm trying to get the permit, I'm trying to open my business, that the council has to act in sixty-two days, or the recommendation of the planning commission stands?
That's right.
I like that.
That was, because we talked about that repeatedly throughout this process.
Right.
Yeah.
Just something that puts the clock on the real clock, so there's a ending to.
I can do that.
So are you saying here that this doesn't require them to have a hearing?
No, they have to have a hearing.
All right, so one of the problems that has been happening with the common.
That's the final decision maker has to have a hearing.
Okay, that's cool. They are using the term hearing loosely, and at times referring to committee meetings as hearings, so I don't know what to do about that, I mean, that's just an operational problem.
But I don't wanna speak for them, and I don't wanna do their work, but obviously, but there are multitudes of examples in the municipal setting where I call a public hearing and immediately adopt into record all of the public hearing comments made at Steve's hearing to open my hearing.
Right.
That say, these will now stand as the first comments to the action to be taken by our committee. And that's all I do, unless somebody's here, obviously.
Sure.
And I call on them to come up and speak, but, am I wrong? Am I missing a part here?
No, if they do that, then the question is, when, if there's anybody that ever adjourns, let's just say there's someone who tables it, after they do all those things and say, yes, recognizing what went on before, and we can act on this, that we decide not. That's the tricky part.
Okay.
But I think otherwise, it's fair to say, someone takes it, recognizes there's the application, and says, we recognize there's already been a public comment.
Okay.
They could vote on it.
And they could open comment, obviously, they have a right to do that, but they could also just vote if there was nobody there.
Right.
At that moment, based on the evidence presented.
Right, because there's already been a public comment, they can ask anybody, it's their proceeding.
And the record before them is gonna include everything.
That's right.
So that's my first sort of question. Additionally, with Jake, are we interested in putting an end to the clock by saying, our stuff holds and their stuff doesn't?
Upon the review of council to render a decision within sixty-two days, CPC recommendation shall become the final decision.
Right, and then my last comment is, you know, this now requires us, I believe, us the city and the planning commission to have an obligation to the applicant again, you have to go to these other meetings, because if, to be fair, they should hear if somebody has a concern at the council level, or a problem, or an objection, or a, I don't wanna do this, you know?
Because the council can meet their obligation and say, yep, our vote is.
And if they're not present, they didn't even get a chance to say, well, okay, I'll just.
Do you tell them to go to the council?
But see, this is where we.
Sorry, Ji Tong.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so I told them, like, the study session, open to the public, you may be here, but you may not be able to.
It's not a hearing.
Yeah, it's not a hearing, for the vote session, you definitely cannot be there.
So we had talked about this, Mira, because I had talked to Joe Barry about this during the SPE, special permit stuff with them, and he said, the way we use hearing means public can comment, but you said public hearing simply means, in terms of state law, that the public can be present, but it doesn't mean that they can't speak.
No, I was wrong, Jake pointed out that I was wrong about that.
So that's the problem, because one of the things happens is, the first time this will be discussed is in a study session, or a committee meeting, not a hearing by a common council.
But you can accept our hearing, as I just said.
Because we've had ours.
Right, we've had our hearing.
So our hearing stands as the public comment.
Understood, but with respect to the comment about the applicant being present, because this is what happened with the liquor store, with Gifford Street liquor store problem, because they showed up at a common council meeting and wanted to speak, and so I had to explain to them that they couldn't speak, what the procedure was, you know, et cetera.
How the council handles this is really gonna be a product of their advice from their council, who's Joe Barry and Sue, and really, we can't.
And the clerk.
Yeah, we can't really do anything more than what we've done.
Right, all I'm saying is.
I think it's really reasonable to have a default provision in it.
And from the perspective of somebody just coming in, trying to open a small business, we should have to be sure we're being as clear as we can that we've added a set step here, that will give, don't go get the loan, and start paying yet, because.
When we engage council, hopefully after our formal planning commission meeting, you know, that's something that can be brought up, that, everything that was just said, but also, the comment on how other cities do this, and many other upstate cities don't have them decided by the council. So it's something I think we can bring the topic up and include that in it.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll.
I'm just giving my comments.
Well, I guess, I think, one of the things I'm wondering about is not doing something vis-à-vis the common council, but in communication with the applicant, they know that this is going to the common council, it may be discussed in a study session, or a general meeting, where you can attend, but you can't comment. If there is a hearing, then you can participate.
I don't think you should speak for the council at our level. I mean, I'm not sure it's gonna be practical, that anybody goes to a meeting and you're not allowed to answer a question, like, the council's gonna have to figure this out.
I mean, that's what happens.
We really can't resolve it here, and.
No, but I'm just talking about communication with the applicant, just so the applicant knows what's happening in the future, not changing anything with the common council. But if the applicant doesn't know how this is gonna be processed by the common council.
We don't know either right now. To be honest, we don't really know either, I mean, I've heard different versions of how it's gonna be handled at the council level, and I'm really not sure how it's gonna shake out. I mean, to be honest with you, it's been pointed out that, well, there's a, so there's three lines of cases, I mentioned this to you before, one is where you make the decision, one is where. One is where counsel reserves unto themselves to make the decision. And the third is where the planning commission makes the decision and counsel reviews it. But that's, so I brought that to Sue. I was like, do you think we fall into that? I don't. And she was like, absolutely not. This is a recommendation, and counsel is still making the final decision. So how that public hearing is treated really depends on the model, but there's not case law on our little situation here where we have this recommendation thing, because most people bite the bullet. Neither counsel does it, or CPC does it. And apparently, there's like this weird hybrid where planning commission makes the decision, but the weird thing about that one is that, so if counsel is making the decision, they don't have to be bound by the review criteria.
Right.
You make the decision, you absolutely are bound by the criteria. And if you make the decision and counsel's in a review function, this third line of cases, counsel is also bound by the review criteria in that circumstance. Our situation is even different, yet it's, you make a recommendation, and you're bound, of course, in all those cases, you're bound by the criteria. And so presumably, counsel's not, because you're not a final, you're not making a final decision. But it kind of just falls through the cracks in terms of the public hearing stuff. And I haven't found anything, and I've looked a lot, about what do you, whose hearing can count as what. So the way we do it, to my understanding, is that counsel basically accepts your public hearing as a public hearing. I'm not sure that's okay. I don't know, so there was a memo from many years ago that kind of suggested that. But under new lines of cases and changes, I'm not sure that's still what holds. But that's how they've been acting, and that's also what the genesis was of this whole thing about, I forgot what that issue was. I'll think of it in a minute. So.
If they accept our hearing as their, to meet their requirement, is that ever said explicitly, or is that just kind of assumed?
Hasn't been in the past, not publicly.
It is, but I wouldn't know how to.
And we can't make them.
I can't really codify that either. Like, I've done everything I can to make the procedure explicit within the context of what the law, the law doesn't really say that much about, it just says you're going to have, whoever makes the final decision has a hearing. Period. That's what it says. All the other detail is for you to go figure out yourself, so. And institutions like common counsel and planning commission, they have their mores and their ways of doing business and their culture, and so I just don't know where that will fall out. I've heard lots of discussion about it, but we'll see when we get closer. And there's always future amendment cycles, and so. When we get there, I want to draw your attention to the renewal section. Are we there? There's the expiration of a special use permit can happen under a few circumstances. One is that you don't renew, two, that you fail to meet your conditions, or three, you don't get a permit. But more importantly, right here, is this new weird renewal language. So this is, was my attempt to make the process easier, not put the burden on the applicant, and do what the mayor had asked us to do, and that is, and you have a hard copy too, Barry, I think. So I tried to stagger, staff hasn't even really seen this yet, but I want to start at the bottom. Ji-Ton, can you bring it down a little bit? So there are, there, there are thousands and thousands of special use permits out there. And so what I did with this was that I said they'll renew on January, this is new for the team, they're going to renew those thousands of them before July 1st, 2023, are going to renew on January 1st, 2027. And if they haven't gotten a letter, they need to apply for a renewal. I think it says that. Yeah, before June 30th, 2026. So the way I figured this would operate is that.
Go back to the dates again?
It's right there. So shall renew on January 1st, 2027, and right in the middle of the next paragraph, which I don't see for some reason, the second line, yeah, there it is. If a property owner and or business owner has not received notice of their automatic renewal on or before June 30th, 2026, that's six months before, then you need to start getting ready to apply for your renewal. So I pushed this, so I was kind of torn. This is a shorter timeline than some of the other ones, but the other ones get 30 months, right? But there's so many of these, but what I figured the way this would happen in reality is that we'll start going through them little by little and start prepping ourselves for the status of them. I don't even know if we can track all of them, to be honest. Everything we can find, we'll start tracking. This gives us a year lead time to start preparing renewal letters, and the vast majority of them are going to just get their renewals. And then there's going to be a handful of these old ones that are going to get caught up in this, and they're going to have to apply. Okay? And that's because, based on the renewal criteria that comes after this, it's going to show that they have done something that causes them, they didn't get a C of U, or there's some dubious status to their actual SUP. So they're going to have to reapply. If we don't communicate with all 5,000 of them by next June, then we don't, and they're going to renew. And then in the next 30 months, we'll keep plowing through it. So that's what I decided was the easiest on staff and the most assurance for people who have had them. Because most of the bad actors we catch.
You've got to know about.
What?
You've got to know about.
Yeah, most of the bad actors we know about, or they're coming in for something anyway, and they're mostly getting caught through the C of U process. So I'm not real worried about the bad actors not being caught here, because there's not that many, they just are so bad, they make everyone look bad. So this is just going to be something we have to chip away at. So if you can pull it up a little bit. So the next date I put in was, yeah, special use permits granted between July 1st, 2023, and insert date is the date of the adoption of these amendments. That's since rezones started, so that's just a two-year period, basically. And if you scroll, they have to renew by April 30th, 2028. I'm assuming in a final October, roughly October, final date for these amendments. If it's earlier, I'll change it to March. But that gives them 30 months from the date of the adoption of these amendments. And again, if they haven't gotten a letter from us by October 30th, 2027, then they need to start making their application. That language tracks for all three of them, okay? And then, if you go up to the last category, anything that's after this date, they've got 30 months. It's straightforward. You know, the process, the process is new. Okay? So that's the renewal process that satisfies what we were directed to do. And then, I think I'm missing a page, 209, yeah, 208, 209. Something's weird about this. Oh, so on this next page, right there, this may, this is another issue with this numbering It goes to Roman numeral four. That's coming from B, renewable special use permit. So there's one, two, three, these three categories. And then four, where a property owner and or business has not received a notice, blah blah blah. So this is the rest of the renewal process. And this is one, I just want to point out to you, one of the huge problems with this code, they didn't go any further than like 5.4, and then it's AA, one, Roman numeral one, one A. You can have citations that are like, one, one, A, Roman numeral four, one, AA. It's really ridiculous. Had they just gone one more level with the numbering, like 5.4.1, or even 5.4.1.1, then we'd be in, so it makes the numbering insane, and so I'm sorry it's so confusing. But that Roman numeral four at the top of the page is a continuation of this renewal of a special use permit that starts at B on page 207. So it's just, it's very messy. But anyway, that's all the renewal stuff. You had it before, I haven't changed any of that. Then the next subsection.
Where does the, where does the number 30 come from?
Yeah, I was kind of curious about that.
We, we tossed, no, we tossed it around. We were, we thought about, I think some, at this body, we had talked about two months, and we talked about five years, and 60 months seem, and I did it by months, not by years, or, I thought 60, five years is too long, because, especially since we have an automatic renewal process. And once everyone gets caught up in the system, then it's just going to be boom, boom, boom. It's just going to be painful at the beginning. So 30 months is enough time to get in trouble. The really, it really is 24 months, because I'm kind of giving them a few months lead time to start getting their application in. So it's really after two years, you got to start thinking about putting.
What you want to do.
What you want to do if you don't get a letter. I don't like the structure of this so much about the way it's worded, but I was trying to fix what we had without having to rewrite the whole thing. I don't like it saying that if you didn't get a letter, start getting ready, because everyone's going to lie and say they didn't get a letter. But as Jake points out, if you aren't applying, then you're going to expire, and then you're going to find out that you don't have one anymore. And so I've been very explicit over and over and over again that the property owner bears the burden of making this happen. If you didn't get a letter, and you didn't apply, you come in and say, oh, I didn't get a letter. It's like, I don't care. It says if you didn't get a letter, you better just start applying.
Send a letter through the US post office or email.
We'll do, so we'll do everything, every method we have. And one of the problems is that some of these properties, especially if, you know, you're talking about convenience stores, for example, they change hands so often that we're going to have trouble contacting people, but that's, we're going to use the owner of record by address.
Maybe there's a place somewhere for the special use thing to indicate that contact information needs to be kept up to date for these purposes, purposes of renewal.
I think we have that, but I'm going to put that in.
So when we're using the term owner here, we're talking about owner of the property or owner of the business?
Should be clarified, Barry, thank you. Actually, it should be both, because quite often, there's two people involved, owner of property. And in some places, again, this section's really dense, in some places, I did put owner of property and owner of the business, but it should say that everywhere.
And no representative agent? It has to be the owner of the property or the business, not a representative?
They, we have, no, not for this. Like, so basically, we've not fully implemented it yet, but I've been really strict with staff about, I do not want anything coming before you without the owner's signature and a power of attorney saying that the agent appearing before you, or the business operator, has permission of the owner to be bringing the application. Because we have caught probably at least four instances in the hearing where it was like, they said WWW, you know, something LLC, and then we looked it up later because something hinky happened, and it doesn't exist, or the person has nothing to do with it, or we find it in our tech team meetings beforehand. So I've been trying to be really strict. It gets really verbose to be saying property owner and or the operator of the business because, but I will shore that up, because I think it's important. Again, if they want, I'm not going to put it in here, but if someone submits a renewal application with proper authorization, let's say the owner of the properties in LLC. What they have to present us with for an SUP application or major site plan review is they have to present us with corporate papers showing that the LLC is the owner of the property and the person who's allowed to obligate the LLC. So it's Kathleen, she's the sole owner of the LLC, right? And so we get corporate papers, and we can pull them too. We just check what, that's how we find that people are lying, because we pull them when we can find them. So we, we get her LLC papers, and it says that actually Kathleen's not allowed to act on, and she signs a power of attorney. We've had this happen, for Walter to come represent the LLC at the board. But then we pull the papers, and Kathleen's actually not allowed, Steve's allowed to, you know, to obligate the company. So then Steve has to be the one to sign the power of attorney, and if Barry is going to be the agent coming in, Steve has to have signed something to say the agent can obligate them. Because we have had people say, oh, we didn't know, we didn't, the owner, oh, we didn't know that they were, that, we didn't agree to that condition. It's like, so we're, so I'll shore this up to cover the owner and the operator. It's a little dicey, because the operators sometimes are like sublesses and stuff, but I'll, it's a really good point, and I'll try to cover every, every circumstance that I can not too verbally. Okay, so that's all that. And then there's a whole big fat rubication section, which you've had available to you for a while. Contact, most recent contact address. That should be a reason for. Yeah, I'm good. The rest is, oh, it's all this. Oh, the special use approval criteria. Anybody got any comments on it?
Quickly, since we're just over time, finishing Article 5, we revised and clarified some variance procedures, revised some administrative adjustments to expand the availability, and separated the official MAP amendments or rezonings from tax amendment procedures, and established a new procedure for the tax amendments.
Oh, Barry had questions about that.
Yeah.
Oh, and the variance stuff, we didn't, I mentioned it just before we get into that, the variance, it's page 221, where I augmented the variance section. Some of it's new from when you saw the packet, and some of it was already in there. But this is what I was talking about earlier, about variance. So this is a clarification that was there, variance shall not be granted in lieu of complying with use-specific regulations. Variants shall not be granted in lieu of complying with the restrictions and limitations applicable to nonconformities. We talked about that. And I added this, as detailed here, in a variance application must request a use not otherwise allowed in the subject zone, district, or relief from dimensional or physical requirements of this code, or the application shall not be accepted for review. So that's that whole scenario of the rocket station or whatever.
Rocket launching space.
Yeah. And I think it's in area variances that I put the language about frivolous applications, because they're more subject to that kind of treatment, because the factors are, don't all have to be proven, only one has to fly. Okay, now to.